Good evening. Welcome to the May 18th meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission. We, I'd like to start out with a call to order and roll call for our commissioners tonight. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Bradbury. Commissioner Snodgrass. And I'm Robert Saltis, Chairman Cross, happy here this evening. The second order of business is to approve our minutes. And I would open any comment or any comments or suggestions on the minutes. All right, we have a Commissioner Brown has moved, we approve, and Commissioner Bradbury has seconded. Any discussion? All right, all approved, all the approved minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that says nay? All right, the minutes are approved. All right. We normally have an opportunity for the public to comment at the beginning of the meeting. We have one person here in person. Did you care to comment tonight in any way? Okay, Michelle, do we have anybody online? What's just the comment? If you could hear that, if you'd like to comment, please press star nine and we'll try to get you on online here to make a public comment. Anything else? Okay, I will presume that there are no public comments this evening and we'll move on into the meat of the order. Commissioner Burkhart, go ahead.
I just wanted to acknowledge that I'm present via via web.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, didn't see your smiling face. All right, we got that noted, Mark, thank you. All right, I'd like to remind everybody to try to practice good microphone controls here, so when you're not speaking, please turn it off. And I think I'll turn it over to Robin Wolster Grant for our discussion, our first discussion.
Thank you so much. Let me share my screen. Hopefully I can get the right view this time. Let's see, there we go. Oh, boy. It doesn't look like we're able to share. Yeah, sorry about that, or.
Have you seen any good movies? Seen any good band?
There we go, okay.
Josh would write his instructions.
Okay, let's see. Okay, thank you so much. So we last, when we last met, we were discussing the community design element. And as you know, this is, this comprehensive plan update process is new certainly to me and to most of the planning staff. So when I embarked on sharing the elements one by one with your commission, it made sense to me to go through as we have, looking at the goals of each element and through the policies. But it occurred to me that that could take a really long time. And so what I'm, what I'm going to do tonight, as we finish up on community design, is put up the existing goals that are in the element and then pose questions to your commission to consider. And I thought maybe that would be a little less onerous than going through each policy. At the end of this evening's presentation, I will leave it to your commission to decide what works best for you, if it makes sense. And it's not that we haven't gotten a lot of great feedback. Oh, I disappeared. I think it's been really useful and we have notes and, and I will combine the notes from tonight's discussion with our previous meeting so that all of the community design issues and comments are in one place. But I will, maybe we'll discuss which approach seems to be, to work best for your commission. So with that, at some point, I am hopeful that we'll get our, there it is again, okay. Very, very touchy today. So again, we started community design two weeks ago and just sort of recap a couple of the pieces that we talked about, the vision, again, inviting human presence, arousing curiosity, allowing for interaction and providing functional and visual links. Again, sort of the basis for the community design element is really, you know, how we reflect the community's values, incorporating historical traditions. And as we talked a lot about two weeks ago, finding our sense of place and deciding what that means, what is Gig Harbor's identity? So picking up where we left off, within the residential development design section of the element, the goal is, the first goal is to maintain and incorporate Gig Harbor's natural conditions in new residential developments. And my question for discussion is, how well is the city done with respect to achieving a balance between the natural and the built environments? Does it seem balanced? Are there things that we could do better? And then are the buffers that we've established between natural and built environments adequate?
I would comment that this is an area that leaves something to be desired. But I think the city faces a specific challenge with incoming state requirements that will greatly restrict our ability to make new subdivisions and developments that maintain the natural environment the way we'd like.
I would agree with Commissioner Bradbury and building on that, the comments that we've either heard or have been relayed to us imply that residents, the citizens, are not happy with the balance between the built environments and the natural environments, especially where residential neighborhoods are concerned. We have in previous meetings discussed ways of, of both managing density and creating those buffers that are placement of those things to create bigger natural environments and more cohesive or intentional buffers between those, between built and natural environments. And I would say that is definitely the direction we need to head.
I'd like to add to that. I think there's a sense in the community that we have the right words in place, but we haven't seen the right actions implemented, implement those words. Meaning, we may have development requirements and guidelines that say they have to maintain certain amount of buffer area, but there may be a perception, I'll say it's a procession, that maybe sometimes those guidelines get traded off for whatever reasons and the end result is not the desired greenery in the neighborhood that we would have hoped to have seen. I recognize like there's a place in Harbor Hill that's a much different kind of neighborhood that was designed intentionally to for smaller lot sizes and less green space, just because it is a more efficient way to build, I think. But there are other, other areas we've seen of newer developments that have come in, that people kind of scratched their head and say, if we've got all these rules to protect the community and keep green spaces available, what happened? And so there's a perception out there that somehow it's not working. And I think the other commissioners that spoke would echo that there's, something is not quite working with this, this policy. And we have to kind of be very mindful about it in terms of going forward, making it clear in the comprehensive plan. And then the implementing detailed guidance that it's going to work better as we go forward over the next 20 years. That'd be my thought.
Any comments on the buffers in particular? Do we feel the buffers have been, have been respected and good enough, very?
No.
I'm sorry, Mark, Commissioner Burkhart has his hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me okay? I had an opportunity this last week to, for a kind of an informal presentation with, from one of our design review board members. And he kind of went through the history of the comp plan and things and design review. And one, one point that kind of jumped out is, is we do have some good language in there. And overall, it, it, it does work. But sometimes it takes a little time for some of those buffers to regrow or fill in, have you? There's one example with St. Anthony's, the, the hospital. And what that looked, he had an overhead picture of what it looked like during construction and what it looks like now. And I think, I think they've done a fairly good job of infilling the, the greenery and vegetation around that. It kind of almost disappears in that hillside to a certain extent, from the road at least. So I guess I would, I would, I would suggest that some of these buffers, they may not immediately look adequate, but they can, they can kind of fill in over, over some time. I think part of it is some of these new developments that we've had are just so large that they're, they're much, you know, they're much greater impact initially. So I don't know what we could do to kind of ensure that the, that the proper plannings are, you know, replanted and it's, and it's maintained so that that, so that those buffers have a, have the best chance they can to regrow and form as, as time goes on.
Yeah, makes sense. Right. Thank you. So the next goal is to ensure new residential developments provide an interface between public and private activities. My questions are, does the city provide adequate connections between neighborhoods? If not, what would improve those connections? And then the second question has to do with residential parking, too much or not enough, or just right, sort of Goldilocks.
I am not quite sure what that goal means. And in right reference to, is there adequate residential parking? In some new residential developments, the answer is clearly no. Very small lot sizes, no on-street parking allowed. Barely enough room for two cars in the driveway, which means cars are overflowing into other streets where there is parking allowed. Out here on Scansy is a good example. Where we have that new development and people are starting to park out there along Scansy because there's not adequate parking inside the development areas.
Can I ask staff to kind of give us a couple of examples of interconnections that would help us kind of understand this one a little bit better?
Oh, the policies under this particular goal talk about automobile connections, and I didn't want to focus necessarily just on that, but you know, do we have too many dead ends? Are there, again, just, you know, can you get from neighborhood to neighborhood? So some of that is infrastructure. But to me, there is also kind of the broader question about, and I guess it does sort of have to do with, in my mind, sort of cul-de-sacs, where you have these isolated pockets, neighborhoods that, that don't interrelate or interconnect with, with other surrounding neighborhoods or with commercial nodes for, for that matter. So generally connectivity, I guess, is, is what the, the policies here were sort of pointing to.
I think last time we talked about, some people wanted more connectivity and others did not.
We did.
You know, cul-de-sac may be perfectly what the neighbors wanted when, that's why they maybe moved there. They didn't want the street traffic. And maybe they didn't want the sidewalk that goes to some big box store going through their neighborhood because that would be traffic that they might not really, they might be concerned about. So there's, there's pros and cons to connectivity. Maybe we have to find the right balance, that's probably the whole comprehensive plan, right? Finding balance.
Balance, indeed.
Bicycle paths, would that be an example of connectivity?
Sure.
Because that, that seems to be a much more benign activity that people seem to enjoy. Just a thought.
Yeah, if they're safe and people use them, you bet.
It kind of depends on how old the neighborhood is, as far as the connectivity to or from it. I think, and, and to an extent, we can set that goal. And we can even have a goal of, of where we can retroactively make connections that make sense, that's great, but this is a forward-looking document. And the idea of multimodal connections between neighborhoods, I think both would achieve climate kind of goals, it would achieve connectivity kind of goals, it would achieve quality of life goals, because we are a very active community and we like the idea of recreational trails, even if we aren't going to use them to commute. And so that idea of connectivity, there isn't as much as I think people would like. I would say as far as vehicular connectivity, it depends on the age of the neighborhood. And there's only so much we can do about established neighborhoods.
How much do you think connectivity contributes or doesn't? We talked a little bit about this last time, to, to cohesion, to a sense of community. Is, is that important or is that something kind of bygone era? Where you came out and we talked again about, you know, folks gathering, you know, maybe there's a, there's a common area or open space where, you know, within the neighborhood, you're walking your dog, you're, you're seeing your neighbors, but neighborhood to neighborhood, is that, is that kind of a relic or is that still important to community?
I think it's a relic. Our community, for example, has a community center, there's lots of gathering opportunities. I don't see any desire by anyone to reciprocate or to have other activities with other communities. Like, I'm kind of scratching my head trying to think what the benefit of that would be. So I, I think you hit it on the head, I think that's kind of a relic, it's a concept that may not may not have an audience, perhaps.
That's a tough one, though. I mean, do we give up on it in our comp plan? Because it seems like nobody's interested anymore, or do we increase opportunities to maybe make it, to take another stab at it, if you will? Maybe it's just my era, but you know, that was very important when I was growing up, that kind of activity. And not having it, I think, makes us a a less rich, less connected society. And maybe a comprehensive plan is, it's a vision state, it's a vision document. It's what we want it to be, maybe it's not that way today, but maybe if we put in some connections or some, something in a plan, maybe we could make it better. I don't know how the answer to that, but that's my thought.
None of these have easy answers. Oh, please, yeah.
Commissioner Burkhardt.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Commissioner Saltis, I don't, I would, I would be hesitant to give up on that. I think where you see different groups have an opportunity to get together where there's small neighborhood groups or, or, you know, sports groups or things, they, they, they jump at that. So I would, I would agree that the, that it would be responsible of us to maintain those opportunities or help promote them if we could.
Briefly, I would actually agree with Commissioner Saltis and Commissioner Burkhardt. I would, I would argue that the trends that I'm seeing in residential development in municipal and other municipalities' comp plans and, and community visions are actually, I would say there is a rebirth of this idea of the front porch society of that connectivity, of the idea of public spaces, getting out and walking, encouraging outdoor activity and meeting your neighbors and those kinds of things. So I actually think that yes, we went through a long period where it was dying, but I think we're seeing a rebirth of that. And I think neighborhoods in the harbor, Lake Harbor Hill, indicate that millennials, Gen Z, you know, middle-aged and younger families want that.
Excellent, thank you.
I, I don't think I made my point that I was trying to make. The point is, it seems to me that those activities are primarily within a community, within a neighborhood. And I'm not sure that the city has much of a role to play there. I mean, within the neighborhood where, where I live, there are 58 houses, there's a great deal of community activity. And there's nothing we lack or need from the city in order to maintain it and enjoy it. But I, I don't see any appetite for reaching across town and, and engaging in community activities with the people in Harbor Hill or, or anywhere else. So that was the point I was trying to make. I don't think we need any help from the city in order to continue to enjoy that kind of neighborhood activity.
I would actually say that the city does play a role in that because neighborhoods that have connected sidewalks and front porches, all of those things are more conducive to that. My neighborhood, we don't have a lot of interconnected sidewalks, we don't have front porches. You have a lot of sort of single streets, you know, they, they either take advantage of the view or whatever. We don't have a lot of connection to each other and it shows. We don't have the same level of neighborhood interconnectedness. And I think the activities, the sounds of Scansy and the trick-or-treating down in the harbor and at Uptown do indicate that people are willing to go to certain parts of town for community activities. And it was crazy busy in this general area on Saturday for the, the Makers Market. So I think people are showing some degree of willingness to parking show, they were coming from areas other than walkable distance. So they will move to different parts of, of the city for those kinds of events.
I would offer the comment that I, I agree with both sides of this argument. I would characterize it as the nature of community cohesion is changing. Cul-de-sacs, for example, you mentioned those. When, when that idea was first put forth and began construction all over the country, it was intended to develop that kind of community cohesion. Now what we're talking about is, it does, right there, in that community only. And then for people to engage something, somewhere else, they get in their cars. And, and that, that is community after community after community across the United States. And, and some of that is built in. It will be very difficult to change it, but there, there are things that can be done. And I think those kinds of things need to be part of the plan.
Great comments from everybody, I think.
This is absolutely great. I appreciate it. And we do have quite a few more, but that's okay. Homes and residential developments should be designed to enhance existing characteristics of Gig Harbor. So my question, how well do current design standards reflect the character of our neighborhoods? And then the next question has to do with design and how lot configuration, building orientation play in, in creating a sense of place within the context of different neighborhoods? So first of all, yeah, the existing characteristics of Gig Harbor is kind of a one-size-fits-all and, and challenging, so, but I would still see if you have a response to either of those, those questions.
Not seeing a lot of hands here. I don't even know for sure what we want to characterize our community as designs, because we have a wide variety of them across 100-odd years, our community developed. And, and that, that is something that carries a natural trend as to what designs are popular at any given time. And, and some of that is just going to come by nature. So I, I am not quite sure what, what our objective should be, what, what would be reflective of our community.
Without going beyond the scope of, of these questions, I think what Commissioner Bradbury said pointed to something we talked about last week and that discussion of like, the idea that maybe we need to address the idea of neighborhood overlays. Because we do have these different parts of town that have a different character or different characteristics. And do we want to kind of further define those, enhance those and have them be more directly associated with that neighborhood and maybe blending with the existing character that exists within that neighborhood? And the second question kind of goes back to the discussions we've had about buffers and, you know, lot configurations, creating public space that encourages gathering spaces.
Go ahead, Mark.
Sorry about that. I'm dealing with bandwidth problems. Anyway, yeah, I, I would just back or back up with Commissioner Snodgrass just mentioned, I think that, yeah, that we kind of identified an issue with the former plan and, and that we define these neighborhoods, but kind of use the same design standards that are kind of mainly seem more meant for the, for the downtown kind of external, historical area, excuse me. So yeah, I would, I would think we'd want to maybe look at the standards kind of maybe more neighborhood by neighborhood or at least, you know, loosen those up where they're not have the effect of the historical nature of downtown or they're not impending on that.
And I will say, we talked quite a bit after the, the last, last meeting staff about, about that exact issue. And my, my first question was, was going to be, you know, a sort of revisiting that question of what, what is the existing character of neighborhoods? And we don't, we have the districts and I, I included the map again of the different districts. And so we've been having discussions along those lines and, and I think it's, it's, we certainly agree that there hasn't been a distinction between the different districts and, and, and maybe they're not even defined the way we all want them to be, but I think that's, that's going to be a, a subject of a lot of discussion in the new, the updated content.
For your consideration, I would add, think about Millville. We have very specific requirements about
We have very specific requirements about renovations or new construction in the Millville district. But drive through there. There were some houses built in 1920 and others built in 1970 and everywhere in the middle. So what really are our design characteristics even in Millville?
Could I ask a quick question relative to this about lot sizes and, and house sizes? We, we had, at one point, the city had made a, you know, a policy decision to have smaller lot sizes, essentially increasing density. And that's what you see today in places like McCormick Creek, North Creek, Harbor Hill, the development behind Target, you know, all of those, all of the Gig Harbor North developments. Not long ago, 2016, I think it was maybe 2018, the council decided to increase those lot sizes again, kind of go away from that idea of more compact residential development. What are your feelings or what are your thoughts on, on what you've seen in the, in the city and how that's, how that's played out?
I don't like it. No, I, I small lot sizes can be good if you've got a development that is designed around the kinds of characteristics we've been talking around here today. Most of them I've seen are not. They are just simply designed around how many houses can I pack into a given area? Which does nothing to achieve the goals and objectives we're talking about here today. I, I do like larger lot sizes personally. You know, I, I would like to have a vac yard big enough to let my dog out in. Some of these new developments literally do not have that. But again, it comes down into the initial design. I, I've lived in those kinds of developments and they can be quite nice. But it has to be designed with these kinds of objectives to begin with. Not, not just maximizing the, the development itself.
The idea of a smaller lot size per se? Well, okay, let me rephrase that. I would like to see developers get smaller lot sizes as a density bonus in exchange for green space, in exchange for, you know, larger buffers. And I still think that a design, a cohesive design characteristic needs to be, I, I feel like that's even more important for houses on smaller lots than it is for ones on larger lots.
Can the city design experts help facilitate something like that? Like Commissioner Snodgrass talked about. I mean, is there something that can be added to the development guidelines and requirements that would get us there that is not there currently?
So it's, it's funny, the part of, part of the expansion of the lot sizes or making the lot sizes bigger, that, that whole all of those or all of those code changes that were made at that time also included eliminating our ability to allow for planned residential developments, which we already, we do have in our code. We have planned residential developments. We have planned unit development. Planned residential is for residential. Planned unit is for commercial development. And within that code, it does exactly what Commissioner Snodgrass was describing. And so some of those developments up there, Harbor Hill, for instance, McCormick Creek, a couple of the others up there were developed as planned residential developments. And essentially that becomes a new zone. And so all of the, all the give and take that is, is provided there for large, for more density and more open space perhaps. And there can be other things involved with that as well. I lost my train of thought for just a moment. I'm sorry. All, all of, all of those, those items that allowed for that are now, even though they, they can exist, they, oh, I know where I was going with that. I'm sorry. They, that essentially becomes your development standards for that development then. So if we said we're giving you a bonus density, in exchange, you have to provide larger setbacks, let's say, or maybe you have to provide additional open space, or maybe you have to provide some additional parks. Those things then all have to be maintained as part of that development. It becomes its own, becomes its own code essentially for that, for that development. But now, while we can amend those PRDs that currently exist within the city, we cannot allow for a new application to come in. Our code prohibits it. And similarly, I would say development agreements are another way that you can get those bonus densities. The code also, development agreements were also eliminated from our, from our code. However, council still has to accept an application per state law for development agreements. But we don't have any guidelines around how to process those now. They were taken out of our code. So it was a, in other words, discouraging development agreements, discouraging, well, and eliminating planned residential development. And, and I bring this up now, not to advocate for bringing those back into the code by any means. I bring it up because it is one, this is, it is, it is one of the actual actions, not actions, tools that are described within this section of the comp plan under these goals.
Was that a particular year and a particular, is that a council members that made that particular?
Yeah, it was, it was during 2016. There was a moratorium placed on, on residential development in the city. And there were several phases of code changes that were laid out by that, by the, by the council at that time. We went through all of those changes. There's still numerous changes that are sitting in what we called the parking lot at the time that didn't get implemented. But there were about three or so phases that we went through relative to the code where we and it took, took, took it apart just a bit, took it back.
Because that was a during period high when people said, whoa, whoa, this is kind of, things are going crazy. You gotta slow down.
Correct.
So that was then the driver for taking these, it sounds like design-friendly approaches off the table.
Well, in a sense, I don't know if, you know, you could argue it either way, I suppose. Some people might say that they aren't design-friendly and some people might say that they are. So it, it definitely took some of the flexibility out of the code. Or I think, and that was the idea, was to take flexibility out of the code for developers so that they couldn't come in and build another McCormick Creek or another Harbor Hill.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Burkhardt.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, it's kind of, it was, part of this is probably the unforeseen consequence of, yeah, the bit of the backlash that happened at that time. I, I, I think it would behoove us to, yeah, kind of have some clear standards so that we could clean, clean some of that up. But it seems like we've kind of handcuffed ourselves from, from what in the end we really desire. Based on, you know, a, a simple thing is lot size. I think lot size, large lots have their place and I think small lots can work well and have their place also. So I would be more in favor of flexibility than, than a, than a too, too harsh of a standard.
So there are some things about Harbor Hill and, and actually more the commercial part of it than the residential that did not make sense to me until I read the old comp plan. And when you read it, you go, oh, it makes sense now. And they kind of, they followed aspects of the letter of it to an extent and missed the intent. Things like the, the greenery between Burnham and the developments. However, you have the backs of those buildings facing it. So now you don't have a friendly, connected sense of place. You have this, you have a road and you have a parking lot-centered development. You don't have that connection. It was absolutely intended to be a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood between the neighborhoods and the grocery store and the neighborhoods and the little restaurants and things that would be there in the eventual ball fields and the Y and all of those things. But it doesn't, none of the retail along Burnham actually functions well on a pedestrian scale. And to that, I think form-based code and better defining these district overlays so that there is a character that, that way there, there are parts of the town where larger lots are more the standard. And then there are parts of town where smaller lots are more standard. But there are these other aspects of it, be it larger green spaces, a design scale and scope within the, the comp plan or the district overlay that makes it more pedestrian-friendly. So it doesn't just feel like density. I think that would go a long way to both allowing the flexibility required and also preserving, preventing what people feel like is just out of control density, which is what ticked people off and made them send the pendulum the other way.
Commissioner Snodgrass, could I clarify? You meant businesses along Borgan. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Borgan, not Burnham.
Should we move on to the next one?
I'm not hearing any audio. Is somebody speaking?
Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry. Do you hear me now?
Yes, I hear you now.
Oh, gosh. I'm sorry about that. I was assuming my, my voice carries. Anyway, so I'm just, I'm just showing the, the district area map again to sort of reinforce the, these distinctions that don't have any attached standards that differentiate them from a design perspective. And, and so that seems like something that there's some consensus about having to look at that again. And then looking at the actual boundaries and seeing if those make sense. Sorry. It was not clear there. So the next goal is promoting sustainable residential development. And the question there is just what, what considerations should be given to sustainability in terms of residential development? We did talk about this last time a little bit as well, but any other thoughts?
May I ask? The definition of sustainable that you were using, how do you define sustainable?
I, well, I, my idea of sustainability has to do with energy conservation. Also related to what we're talking about, getting out of your cars, the building materials that, that are used that do not make use of, of things that are not renewable. And so it can, it can be a bunch of things. It can be anything from orienting buildings to, and again, we talked about this last time, to make use of solar. So from an energy perspective, from getting people out of their cars and, and from the actual materials used in construction, it can be any and all of those things.
Well, I think this is still very important and we should keep it in there. There's, over the next 20 years, we're going to be astounded by what the, the new building codes that are coming down from the state and others statewide nationally. All these things like energy efficiency, insulation, solar, electric cars, preparing for electric vehicles in these, in these residential homes. I suspect that in time, that the smart thing will be to wire the homes for an electric vehicle charger. And then when you, it's so much easier and cheaper to do it when you're building a home. And then if you decide you want to have an EV in your garage, you have to go the extra five feet. That's on you. But it makes perfect sense what it involved in, in the initial package. So my opinion is that's just a, we have, I, I'm going to have a vision for the comp plan from my perspective that has, the 20-year plan is we're all going to, we're going to have a city that is really connected like this. And with all the EV cars going around and, but this is part of, this is the residential development part of that, that climate change component. So I'd say yes. Commissioner Burkhardt.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was, I was actually going to send, send a link to this after our last conversation on this. If, if you wanted to, an example of, well, I guess the extreme or, or depending on your perspective, the, the visionary a goal would be something like the Living Building Challenge, which I'm not sure who's familiar with that. But they actually started up in Seattle, but which is, I have a side story on that. And, and the idea is that it's a building of very low impact on the land. All the energy that the building uses is collected on-site, whether it's solar or, you know, other, there could be other means to small hydro or things like that. All the water that falls on is, or that's used there is recycled or treated on-site. And it seems like a missing one. There's like five pedals, they call it. But I'd encourage anybody who's at all interested in, in what the, what the future vision is or, and it's, and they built some houses, like there's a house up in Bainbridge that is used as standard and, and completed a house and then ran into issues with the city of Bainbridge because they wouldn't allow them to actually treat their, their waste on-site. They, they required that, that required them to hook into the, to the public sewer system. So I, I'm kind of of the mindset that you would encourage these kind of innovations and, and as opposed to not, I guess you could say, but it, it's an interesting concept. And, and, and frankly, with current technology, it's, it's actually doable at this point, at least, you know, close to the, to the goal.
Let's move on.
Okay. So this goal is, and now we're talking about waterfront specifically. And again, but we've gone back and forth a little bit about whether things that have to do specifically with the waterfront are more properly dealt with in the harbor. So just sort of keep that in the back of your minds as we go through waterfront design. Preserve visual points of interest. So the question here, what can the city do to better make use of the waterfront view shed? What role should the waterfront views play in defining Gig Harbor?
I, I would just state the obvious. All of that property is either privately owned or it's owned by the city or county where you have parks. So in terms of preserving, I, I, I don't know how we would do that. Seems like we've already done it, at least to the extent we can.
Any privately held land can be sold. Therefore, what future people do with it is still sort of governed by what we decide here. And that would be my, you are correct in that it's either owned or it seems to be publicly owned. I, I would, my obvious point would be the waterfront views do define the harbor. I mean, that's Gig Harbor views itself as a waterfront town. We bring tourists in because of our waterfront. We, our history is based in gold fishing. It's, it's dependent upon the waterfront. Do we use the waterfront as efficiently or optimally as we could? As efficiently or optimally as we could? I don't know that I believe that. But how do we? Yeah, how do you fill in without blocking or destroying something that? That is both an environmental and an economic asset? And. How do you, I would say, how do we better connect? Both sides of of the harbor and the waterfront to the things that are on the non waterfront side?
I like to add to what Commissioner Snodgrass says. I have two points here. What irritates me when I go to a beautiful waterfront area is when the view is totally blocked by businesses or homes. Along miles long of along a harbor or a waterfront. I think Gig Harbor has done a really good job of keeping that view shed. Very much alive. And I think that's something we ought to work hard to do. The use of the watershed view is is seems wasted to me when you have an asphalt parking lot. That is, you know, in the foreground of the view of the harbor. We should do better in terms of. Putting activities. Along the watershed area that makes sense and enhance the view. And that that part of the harbor view that is mostly asphalt. Each time I drive by, I think what a waste of a. Of an asset to the community. We we should be able to do better on that. So, yes, it's very important to find Gig Harbor certainly. And we got to do the best we can and and making and taking, valuing that treasure that it really is. Guess that's it.
Okay, yeah, it was a little bit of a softball. So this goal is identify, preserve and develop an appropriate waterfront architecture. What is appropriate waterfront architecture and what, if anything, should be done to enhance the waterfront aesthetic?
Well, we shouldn't build any more buildings like the. Facility at Scancy Park, the pump house slash. Bathrooms and. The rest of it, which is completely, as far as. My opinion, it's completely out of character with anything else in that part of town and. It's. Described by some people as the ugliest building in Gig Harbor, so. It's kind of incomprehensible to me that we could have, you know, this kind of a statement in our. These goals and our comp plan and yet permit a building like that to be built. I I feel that that perhaps without exception. The the waterfront is in pretty good shape. I don't see a lot of room for improvement. As as long as you've got marinas where people are paying. 500 bucks a month, 1000 bucks a month for a slip, they're going to want parking. Parking's going to be there. I I don't see, I think we've done a good job in in terms of. Reserving the views and the access to the to the views in the waterfront and I don't. I don't think we can do much more.
Okay, moving on. Uh, next goal is to develop the waterfront as a place of outdoor people activity. Is the current level of outdoor activity along the waterfront adequate? And I know we've talked about this as well, but.
From my opinion, it's very adequate and there's something going on so often around the waterfront. Kayaking, boating, you know, the big boats. I see it as perfectly. Busy from my perspective. I don't live downtown, but whenever I come downtown and it's what's going on. Anybody else have an opinion? I would agree.
Yeah, the elephant in the room on that question is that we have a rainy season.
What?
So we have phenomenal. Utilization of the waterfront for outdoor activities. You know, how much can you do the rest of the year? So I realize this isn't the question. It's it's how you kind of. Help out those businesses when it's not summer. The outdoor activity, I'm not sure how much more we we could probably do a little more. But it would be busy there. All the time. And I don't know if we can really do much to encourage outdoor behavior, outdoor activities. In, you know, November or February.
It's kind of a wet gondola ride.
The kayak club kids are out there year round.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
And they are stronger than the average.
Okay, next. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. I so I just I wanted to bring this up because it's something that we've been talking a lot about and that's parking down in. In in the waterfront area or just in the downtown business district in general and one of the. One of the. Goals in this. Under this goal, for some reason, I'm losing the term terminology here. Anyway, bear with me. Minimize asphalt coverage along waterfront. Standard parking requirements have prompted removal of structure structures characteristic of Gig Harbor's historical development and encouraged bleak expanses of asphalt along the waterfront. To counter this trend, consideration should be given to A revised parking standards for waterfront districts. B development of offsite parking areas, public and private. And C use of aesthetically pleasing paving materials, including colored textured or. Grass block pavers. I think this gets back to a little bit of what Commissioner Soltes was speaking to in the last one or going over the last goal. What what is what is the commissioner? How does the commissioners, how do the commissioners feel about those those policy, that policy statement that I just read?
I would like to reiterate something that I I discussed in in the focus groups. And it goes back to what we were talking about the summer. The summer activities have great utilization of the waterfront. And in one of those summer activities, you're going to discover there's suddenly not enough parking. By a long shot in the waterfront. People will park even as far away as as the the bus stop. And walk down the hill because there's that little parking down there. So. I'm not saying that we couldn't reduce some of the parking down there, but it has to be done very thoughtfully and there has to be a plan in place. Because we can't. If people can't find a place to park, if they if it becomes too onerous to get down to activities in the summer, they won't go.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it would be. Possible to include how we would encourage. Structured parking where where it could be fit in and in. In a in a pleasing way. That may be a solution. Also, perhaps the. The sharing of the parking resource. You know, we have a lot of churches in in town that only use the parking lots. A couple of times, they're part large parking lots a couple of times. I I I think the Downtown Alliance is kind of working on some of those solutions also, I I believe, but. From what I've heard, I know some of that's being worked on. So I I don't know what how we. Form the comp plan to it to encourage those kind of solutions as well. Good, because it is a, yeah, a very uneven. Requirement. When we need parking and not.
And and I could add to that. The Downtown Waterfront Alliance is working on. A parking study at the moment and they've they've brought together a subcommittee essentially made up of, and I'm on the subcommittee, there's. City staff, a couple council members. And then Downtown Waterfront Alliance folks and we're reviewing. Uh, largely, it's based on the data that they've been gathering since 2008 on parking in the downtown area. That's relative to the Downtown Waterfront Alliance's. Their purview, their main street, you know, their their main street mission. Um, and what they found and what the studies actually show is that there's a. Ample amount of parking in downtown except for on those times when we have events and that that is the time where that's a that's a tougher one, right? And so maybe there is some sort of balance, but I think for this particular goal, you know, and talking about the waterfront and. I think Commissioner Brown talked about it earlier. I think it was Commissioner Brown about marinas and people. Needing to park. So we, of course, you don't want to discourage the marinas and what that that's part of the waterfront, right? But how much parking do they need at the marinas is, I think, is is kind of where this is getting to. We talk about revised parking standards for waterfront districts. Is there is there wiggle room there? Do they need that much parking? Those parking lots are largely empty. Most of the most of the most of the year and the and the study that the Downtown Waterfront Alliance has. Bears that out. It shows that that's true. They're they're largely empty most of the time.
Well, I think that goes back to my colleague's comment about the weather. But what you need to understand is. I don't think there's any marina that has parking for. All of the folks who are leasing those slips. And what what you pay for in part. Is to be able to drive down to the marina. Where you're spending your 750 bucks a month or whatever it is. And park your car fairly close so that you can schlep your stuff down to your boat. And if if, so I I don't think there's any wiggle room whatsoever. There, I I I don't, I can't imagine a situation where you could reduce the parking in the marinas and and people would tolerate that. But the other thing that the point I want to make about the waterfront is. I think once again, we may be putting too much emphasis on. The retail merchant problems in the historic part of town. And and the need to accommodate tourists and visitors. I think. And I have a question for you, Carl. Does does sales tax revenue data exist by neighborhood or by district or something? Because I have not been able to find it. I I think we need that in order to really have a sense of proportion and balance about. You know, how much, how much energy should be put into addressing the downtown problems because most people don't live there.
I'm not aware of that data exists. I've never seen it.
I think we need to get that. I I've said, I've sent Robin a request for that. I I think that's very important information. Yeah, knowing the economic drivers, the areas that really produce the revenue. Think backing up Tom here, if we could get something like that, we could say, you know, Gig Harbor North is a third of the revenue. Olympic is a third. Downtown may be a tenth or a quarter. Who knows? We don't know. But if you look at the. We need to work on every area and make sure that they are. Maxing out and doing the right thing there. But, you know, without the dollars, we're all kind of just. Guessing.
I'll I'll reach it. We'll reach out to the finance director and see if we can, if that data, if he has that data and if not, if if we can get it, yeah.
I would say there's one caveat to that. The amount people send just by nature and what they're buying at Home Depot or at Costco is going to dwarf. What they're spending at El Bobledo or Tides. Or or Tickle Pink or any of those galleries downtown. Do we want to? Prioritize big box stores and grocery stores where people are going to go anyway. Because they have to buy the things there at the expense of our locally owned places downtown because not as much money. Is spent when you're just looking at grocery seats. I was just, the one other aspect I would say is is as far as the parking goes, I agree, you can't get rid of all parking, but it's not a matter of how much parking is available. What people are looking at is how much parking is utilized and are there ways of optimizing? So we don't actually inconvenience the people at the marinas because we recognize that people who own boats live in the area or they're visiting the area. They are just as much residents. Their money's worth just as much and we we don't want to lose. Either that character of of what the marinas bring or. Or the people who who. Utilize them. But are we, are we using the real estate to the best advantage for all people involved is really the question as far as parking. It's not. All parking lots are bad.
Uh, yeah, I I would agree. The highest in, you know, best use to to an extent. I and I and I don't know that the sales tax. Uh, numbers would give us, I I guess I'm confused on what. What guidance that would provide us, but. You know, with I know that the former complan had the term to encourage a vibrant downtown. And I guess maybe that's maybe more where the question is what what? What do we consider a vibrant downtown and and what would? Well, and I say us is is a is a citizens. I mean, I would imagine people who live there and the businesses will all have a little different idea of that, so. Probably coming to a. An understanding of of where what that is that would would lead us in the right direction.
I may add also that the various just different areas of the city, it's not strictly commercial. There's residential. Revenues that come in as well, so. I just think it's good to have the information. I mean, doesn't want to didn't. It's not to denigrate any area. It's less, well, there are areas that are more important than others, but. Uh, it's just a good set of data. I mean, I'm, I was a. A data person for most of my career at NASA and you can't make good decisions sometimes without good data. So if that's available. Why not take a look at it? It's not available. That's another problem, but we we had that earlier, Carl, on another area. I want to say about parking, parking can eat your lunch. I mean, there's no. And it has across the whole United States. People, there is more parking spaces across this country by far than there are people in the parking. And cities and towns put in a lot of parking and. And I. I don't think you can plan your parking for the most extreme event that's going to happen to your community. There you have to find that happy medium place. And then figure out what's going to happen on those few crazy days when you get more people than you can possibly handle. So I I didn't, I liked the words you read, Carl, that were, was that in our plan right now?
No, it's currently in the comp plan.
I don't think those are, I think those sound pretty good to me. I'd like to take a closer look at them. But. You know, again, balanced without with reality with, you know, taking care of the marine, the marinas and. Meeting the needs of the merchants when they have big events that they really want to get people downtown for. Anybody else to, or anything? No, I I concur with you, Bob. I think the language is, it sounds good to me as well.
I'm not hearing you.
It's my fault. I'm so sorry. So this is about preserving the integrity of structures that have historical, architectural. And or cultural significance. Gig Harbor is often referred to as an historic fishing village. My question is, how relevant is this identity today moving forward? And then which types of structures are culturally significant? Should the city do more to address the historical and cultural significance of indigenous peoples? And we talked about that a little bit last time, so. Have at it.
Let me jump in here first. I think the third one is very important that we have, we have to really put a focus on our comp plan on that. Hasn't really been properly addressed over the last X amount of years. So indigenous peoples have to be blended in here and I think that's. So indigenous peoples have to be blended in here. And I think that's also, we got to get focus groups that have that kind of attendance. That's, we gotta give those kind of, uh, that kind of input into the plan. And the other part of the historic fishing village, um, that's part of our mystique, our history. Um, those, there's not a lot of fishing boats going out anymore. And it's been a while since, and the ones that are down there, I believe are, um, Alaska boats that are hanging out and they're, when they're not fishing in Alaska. It'd be great to have a fish market down in Gig Harbor, wouldn't it?
You talked about that, I think, last time. Yes.
Bring that kind of heritage a little closer to the, the current times. Um, I'll stop there. Thanks.
The, the, the challenge is simply that that, that is what we're known for, but how do you identify? There, there's almost none of it left. Uh, but yet that becomes a tourist draw. So how, how, how we address that and, and what structures we define as significant, for example, is, is a tough question, but I, I, I think you're right. It needs to be addressed.
My other thought is I think we've got those significantly cultured, culturally significant structures ID'd pretty well. And, you know, the, the net sheds, the boat, boat building houses, the, um, the Harvard History Museum, there's a lot down there and I don't know what's left to, uh, uh, that needs to be protected. Now, that could be my ignorance. There may be more things that I'm just kind of waiting out there to get some more money to restore. But we got quite a robust, uh, set of cultural facilities down there. So I think we're, we're solid. I just, if there's more to be added to the list, that'd be great, but it's a pretty, it, it, it speaks to the maritime, uh, history very well. But it is history. It's into, to my mind, it's not necessarily the present time anymore.
I'm not hearing anybody.
One more time. I swear this is the last time I'm going to forget to hit the button. Um, so, uh, preserving the character of sites or districts that reflect the style of Gig Harbor's historical development. Does modern development in Gig Harbor's historical, uh, historic area complement or detract from the character of the city? Why or why not? And then what changes to current standards or policies would better preserve or recognize the history of Gig Harbor?
I would like to ask if we have historic districts outside of the downtown harbor and possibly Rosedale that are public facing rather than private residence.
The question is, the question is, do we have any historic districts?
Like, well, so I can identify the harbor in downtown and possibly Rosedale. Couple of the structures over there that are, are public facing, kind of historic structures, districts, but the rest I would identify as private residences. Am I correct in that?
So are, we have a local register, uh, with about 10, 12 properties on it. And those are all, uh, adopted and, uh, by resolution, the council over the years. Uh, they include, uh, things like the Scansey Net Shed, um, the Net Shed at the, um, at Ansich. Uh, the, um, Edden Boathouse, uh, the Brick House, the old Hoppin House next to the Edden Boathouse. Uh, the Shenandoah that's housed behind the Harbor History Museum is on our local register. Uh, the Wilkinson, um, yeah, barn, the Wilkinson Barn on Rosedale is on that register. Um, they're, they're all, uh, publicly owned properties at this point. Um, save maybe the Shenandoah. I'm not sure who actually owns that. It used to be the city's. I don't know what, where that, how that works at the moment. Um, but there is the ability for people to get their private residences on our local register. Uh, and in so doing, then they're subject to, uh, review right now by the design review board. If they want to make changes to their home, uh, they're also would have the ability, however, to, um, get in, get in on a special tax exemption. Uh, special tax valuation through, uh, through the state. If they were to remodel, so they could get tax breaks on the, on the updates that they make to the home. So there's, there's a, there's a sort of a downside and an upside to that, depending on how you look at it. Uh, we are in the process of removing the two members from the design review board that are relative to, um, that historic preservation rev- review, if you will. Uh, and we're creating a historic preservation commission that will oversee the historic preservation program on the whole. So that's a, that's something that's, that's coming very soon, actually.
So from the perspective of the comp plan, we're pretty much looking at downtown as far as these two questions go.
Um, but downtown is the major, in terms of the historic district, that is, it is almost entirely the downtown area. Yeah.
Well, and, and really a matter of modern development in Gig Harbor's historic area. Um, I think it's been discussed that possible it has not, um, certainly not reliably, um, complimented. Um, and in some cases by, I'm sure if we took a survey of, of the community, it would be pretty divided on whether or not it detracts from it. Um, so it is something that we could do a little more to make sure modern development preserves that history. Um, and from the sounds of it, from historic preservation, it sounds like we have fairly robust policies and incentives in place.
That there, there, the, I, I, I guess, I guess there's a question whether or not they're robust, you know, they're, they're what we're required to do. We're, we're designated as a cert- a certified local government, um, by, uh, the state essentially under the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation and the state's Historic Preservation Officer. So we have an obligation, um, because we are that, because we are designated as a certified local government. So we do have that obligation. The interesting thing about the way that Gig Harbor works is that generally speaking, a historic district is something that is designated as a district and everything within that district then is subject to those rules under the state and the certified local government requirements. However, our historic district as it is, is really just, um, um, essentially a zoning overlay and it is not anything that is, um, uh, has been approved by the, by the state or has gone through any of those, um, the requirements that you would need to go through in order to designate a true district. And so things that get changed within our historic district do not need to be, uh, uh, do not have to go through a certificative appropriateness process, in other words. So the only ones, the only properties that need to go through that process are those that are listed on our local register at the moment. I don't know if I'm getting to my point here or not, but the historic district is only really subject to those standards that live in our design manual currently.
I want Commissioner Burkert to have a chance to say something, but so basically you're saying that as far as a district goes, we do not have a well-defined policy in place.
We, we have, we have something that we've created locally that some, some would argue is working well and some might not argue is working so well. And I think, uh, commissioners, uh, talked about it earlier when you were describing that we have, you know, you have houses from the 1920s uh, that you could say are clearly historic. And then you have houses in the same area that are from the 1970s or 80s that one might argue are not so historic. And maybe they are historic to that era, you know, so it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit subjective in that sense, right? But, um, our design guidelines for the historic district are really meant to, they're meant to hearken back to those early, early, early days of the, you know, turn, the turn of the century.
Um, I, I guess, oh, sorry, just a question for Carl. I, I guess I was a little confused there. So currently the designer review board, um, looks at, of course, that based on the design manual, any, any changes in, in homes um, in that, in the historic district based on, based on those guidelines, but we're changing that.
Process. We're, we're not changing that process specifically. The process that's changing is that, uh, any properties that are on our local, um, uh, local, the local register, thank you. Um, those are required to go through a separate process and that process means that they have to be, if any changes are proposed to those properties, uh, they have to be reviewed by a local review board. Our local review board has been the design review board since we became a certified local government. Um, and so we have two members on the design review board that are considered our CLG certified local government members. They must be present, um, for any reviews of those properties. We're going away from that. So we're changing the process by creating a historic preservation commission that would serve as our local review board. Uh, and the other idea in creating that commission is to have an advisory body that kind of has its finger on the pulse of historic preservation in general. We've never had that in Gig Harbor.
I see. I, I understand. Uh, so I guess the goal, um, uh, from, from our standpoint, um, I would think the goal would be a, a, a guideline then for, that would then be handled by the design review board or this in, in the case of these, this, or these certain properties, uh, this other historic body. Ultimately.
Potentially that could be, oh, sorry, Chair.
I was gonna say, it seems to me that this change that is coming, Carl, with the Historic Preservation Commission is going to improve the, the, the second bullet there. It's going to be a better, more, uh, comprehensive, more way, uh, thorough way of looking at the history of Gig Harbor. I mean, I think you're elevating it, aren't you? And by doing this?
Uh, yeah, I would say, I would say it's an improvement. Um, the, the interesting thing, and I guess the reason that I bring, brought up the district earlier and the, the way that we created our historic district is that there's a bit of wonkiness there in that the design review board will still review proposals that take place within the historic district. Those won't go to the Historic Preservation Commission because it's not a true district in that sense. So the design review board would still be reviewing those design manual standards that the historic preservation commission will have no purview over your everyday run-of-the-mill, uh, uh, development proposal that's relative, uh, that's subject to those design guidelines in the manual. The Historic Preservations Commission, their main role will really only be to review changes to those, uh, properties listed on the local register. That's right. Um, but we do hope to convene them, you know, more often and, and hopefully start to use them as a, as a sounding board for things like, um, you know, a relative to historic, historic preservation and potentially expansion of our register, maybe in some ways. Um, we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like because it's a, we're getting into uncharted territory a little bit.
Okay.
Matt, as much as I hate to sound like a broken record, is this something that could be accomplished more cohesively downtown by the use of a historic district overlay? That, that has more defined standards within it?
Well, it's, I, I guess, yes and no. In, in some ways, the answer to that is that we already have that. And maybe it's not working potentially. I don't know if that's true or not. Um, but what we do have is a historic district overlay now, and that's, that's really what we've got. Um, we don't have a historic district in the sense of a true historic district in, I guess, in the state's eyes, if, if you will, right? Um, but certainly there could be, and I think I see where you're going with it, Commissioner Stongrass, that if, if, if we changed the way that historic district uh, was viewed or operated or how those standards were applied, uh, and who is responsible for approving, uh, review of those standards. Uh, for instance, if someone wanted to deviate from standards within that, does that go to the design review board? Is that proper? Should it go to the historic preservation commission? There, there are certainly, there are changes that could be made to that process if the city felt like that was important. And I think that's one of the big questions here, you know, and is that, is historic preservation in Gig Harbor important? We've never had a historic preservation commission. We once had a staff member who was a historic preservation officer for the city. Uh, that was the only time we ever had that. Once that person left, they'd never filled the position and we don't even have the position on the books anymore. Um, we've never really had anybody focused on historic preservations, but, and, and I find it very interesting personally because when we're going through comp plan or talking about anything, history is always brought up in Gig Harbor. So I, I find it to be a really interesting question and an interesting conversation. Um, in, in that, how important is historic preservation in Gig Harbor?
I don't know how much more we have to do on community design. Robin, can you give me a little, a little guestament here? It's eight, it's seven o'clock. This is very fun, of course.
I'm so glad that you, I, I can move through these as quickly as you want to. Um, uh, I'm not sure without getting out of here. Um, that's true. Um, I can, I can flip through or we can skip some, um, I, I, if I were to guess, I think I probably uh, have, uh, six, maybe six more slides, something like that.
I'm sorry, press ahead. I want to get to the focus groups.
Yeah, no, and I do as well. So, um, yeah. Don't, yeah, if, if, if the questions are not, uh, super compelling, uh, feel free to wave me on. Uh, okay. So this is about consistency between zoning regulations and historic preservation objectives. I think we just, we're talking about this. Uh, this is, uh, my question is about more development standards. We've talked about this a little bit, lot size, um, and perhaps this is something that we could address with a, a district that has more specific standards or playing around with the notion of a district and maybe using, um, our, our newly formed commission to, to inform that. If there's anything else, just raise your hand. Otherwise I'm gonna skip on through. Uh, again, historic development, uh, to retain vitality of historic business districts. We've been talking a little bit more about residential, uh, policies that could do a better job of promoting or enhancing the, uh, historic business districts. We don't have a separate, well, I guess we do. Sorry, we have, um, uh, North Harbor, um, has a business district. Um, so is there anything different? Uh, is there a different conversation when we are talking about, um, historic business districts?
I want to say one thing because I want us to be able to move on. And one thing that I thought of came up in focus groups. So I'd like to see it discussed for in focus groups. Is something people maybe don't realize or just don't talk about is that walkable communities don't happen without mass transit. They don't, and I'm not saying mass transit in like massive bus lines or light rail or something like that. But what you were talking about with the, the waterfront alliance, working to create shuttles for peak times, peak demand. Um, making sure they, that there is this conversation between the waterfront alliance and the county and, and the city and trying to make sure that we're providing that adequately so that people can move between districts and so that people can get down to the harbor so that we don't require lots of parking spaces. Um, because that is what will make the downtown vibrant and it is a fun place to walk around. We've, we've built it so you walkable once you're there.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so this is landscape design. Um, we'll go through this, uh, as quickly as we can. Uh. The, the goal is to preserve natural ambiance of the harbor area. Um, I guess my question was, is this redundant? Um, we do have, uh, the harbor as an element. Um, if necessary, what landscape features need to be addressed? Um, I don't have an answer to either of those.
I, I would just say my response to your comment, this one seems to be redundant. And we, we've talked about the viewscape and parking lots and these kinds of things in previous questions. And all that goes into natural ambiance we're trying to achieve.
Agreed.
I agree with Mr. Brad Ryan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this goal is, uh, to enhance the built environment with formal landscaping and consistent street furnishings, uh, vegetation control. Uh, for preserving views. They talk, uh, the, the policies talk about the transition between the natural and built environment. We've talked about that in other contexts. My other question is how do we protect both trees and views? Again, we have talked about this with the view shed, um, piece. If there's anything else to, to add to this, I'm missing. Okay, seeing nothing. Uh, so last, uh, last section, there, I think a couple of different goals. Maybe this is it, uh, signage, uh, illumination. And there, there are a number of different goals to talk about different, uh. Different issues with signage, uh, in, in the context of design. Position signs to fit within features of the facade. There, there are a number of these, but I guess my, my bigger question is, uh, how important is signage? Uh, to the identity of Gig Harbor, uh, and then if any changes that could be made, uh, to create a better fit. Um, the last question is really more what I had in, in my head. Um, what can be done to balance economic development and or vitality with aesthetic values? Specific to signage. Um, I've lived in a number of jurisdictions that had very, very, very strict regulations. On signs and how they were designed. Um, and there was always a, a battle with. Frequently a battle with business owners that said, you know, you're, you're limiting visibility. You're not helping us, uh, attract customers. And so there is a little bit of, of a, um, of a, of a balance again needed there. Um, what are your thoughts about how well we're doing now and what we could do better?
Well, I'll start out, um. I don't think that the, I think the signage in Gig Harbor is, is fine. I think maybe our, my time on the planning commission has missed a lot of the signage. Discussions because that happened before I got on board. But I recall that some people can get pretty exercised about the signage issues. And maybe that's a good thing, but it's to the, to the cop plan purposes, I think. It, it seemed whatever's going on right now seems to be working. I don't see a driver to change anything dramatically. I would like to make the case though. The sign that, that Gig Harbor North and Burnham Drive, the first thing you see is. Women's correctional facility. That's where you're heading to my house. So I was wondering if we could get that in a smaller sign. And then have the Big Harbor North Burnham Drive is the bigger one.
Think we have to talk to Wash Dot about that.
I just having fun here, but yeah, it's like, welcome to Gig Harbor.
That struck me as well when I first, when I first moved here, I thought, okay, lock your doors. Not that that's an issue, of course.
Other more, uh, rational comment? No, I, 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 I concur. You know, when I first read this, signage is important. I think all of us become pretty intrusive enough. I, you know, I think we're doing a pretty good job there because nothing pops out at me that says that. It's not under control. I, I agree with that.
My comment actually is not so much about the signage itself. It's about the comp plan, the signage portion of the existing comp plan. It reads more like code than it does goals. And some of them are repetitive. We could cut pages out of this thing, I think, if we. Just shorten this to actual goal and then put the signage. Like weed out the redundancy and put the signage requirements in.
I agree.
Uh, Commissioner Berger.
Sorry, Ed. I got it now, I think. Um, yeah, I would, I would, uh, stay weird, doing a pretty good job. I would. Um, I, the only thing I may call for or, uh, encourage a little more flexibility in some areas. I mean, based on the scale. Uh, I'm not sure, you know, I don't, I'm not overly familiar with our current sign code, but, um. Um, I, I'd give up a few, uh, sandwich board signs, having to walk around those if, if the, you know, retailer needed a little larger. Sign on the building or something, but, um, uh, overall, I think we did a pretty good job.
Right?
Okay.
Uh, I think. I think we're done with that. I, I wanted to just briefly revisit, uh, because I had, uh, such, uh, um, kind of. Because it was so fun the first time. I just wanted to, to clarify. The visually sensitive areas and, and show, uh, just some better maps. So I'm gonna go through this very, very quickly. Um, but we looked at, at, uh, these, um, basically three different types of visually sensitive areas. Um, the, um, uh, the corridors, uh, basically highway sixteen and parts of Burnham. Uh, and then these interchange areas and then other, the little sort of, uh, the little black dots. Um, are, are prominent parcels. So, um. Just to blow this up so, and I'm sure this is not that, uh, necessary. You know what the corridor is. Um, but just some views, uh, from the corridor and a better, um, a better map of that which actually exists on our GIS. So that's the enhancement corridor from sixteen and, uh, and then the visual interchange nodes. I just took pictures of the three. Um, the Burnham, Borgan, uh, and then, um, Willatchit in Olympic. And. And then just a blow up of these. We don't need to go through these again. Um, it just, I was embarrassed by the. Inadequacy of my previous mapping. So that's what that is. That's my apology toward to you. And then, uh, promise, uh, prominent parcels. We didn't talk about too much. Um, but, uh, some of these are obvious and some are surprising. Uh, six nine oh eight Kimball is the Burger King, uh, across the, the way. Uh, that would not have jumped out to me as a prominent parcel, but it is mapped. Um, the history museum makes more sense to me. Not that it's not important, but, um, it seems to, I, I'm not sure with the, the. The origin story of all these prominent parcels, uh, again, the ones around the harbor makes sense and some of the other sort of vistas. Where you can see it from, from different vantage points. Um, and then the, the bottom is, um, I think that's the, is that the new fish? Food bank location? I'm, I think so. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just, I just found it interesting that, that they're sort of scattered about and in places, again, the prominence being. You know, I guess where you can see it from, um, just wanted to kind of throw that up for, for general interest and.
Are you thinking that we should, um, remove this from the comp plan as, as not really particularly relevant anymore?
Or maybe reexamine it somehow, um, I think, or, or focus on what, what we care about it or how we, how we, yeah, what we care about.
And I would just note that the, this is not a comp, these are not, uh, comp plan designations. This is a, these are. This is part of the design manual. So it's actually codified information. Now that we could, you could create policies to say that these are not important. Anymore, or maybe something else is of more importance that then would, you know, generate that. Later discussion and change to the zoning code.
Would these actually play a role in, in a design review, Carl? I mean, is this something that they say, what is the, uh? Is this a prominent parcel characteristic and that, that sets off a whole different chain of review?
Yeah, we have a, so when we're going through a typical land use review, we have a checklist that we run down that goes through the entire. Design manual. And so we're going through and we're saying, we're checking a box. Does it comply or does it not comply? And we would get to a point in that checklist that would say prominent parcels. So then we would come to this map and check it. Let's make sure it's not a prominent parcel. If it is, then there's a couple of, uh, a couple of, uh, code requirements that they'd have to meet.
Right. And yeah, and I, I apologize for mixing it up, but it, it was in, in the other map. I just didn't want to kind of leave it out. Um, but there is a, a little bit of a disconnect between, uh, the language in the comp plan and, and the, the, um, language in, in our code and the design manual. So. That could be an area where we want to sort of do a little cleanup, one way or the other.
Commissioner Brown? Nope. Saw your finger boys.
Mark, uh, Commissioner Booker.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I can give a little bit of history on the Kimball Drive. That was originally the, uh, John's Breakfast Burgers and Pies, which, uh. Was a great restaurant in its time before it was a Burger King. So that may, uh, may explain its inclusion, but, um. Yeah, it would seem that this could use a little bit of a review or, um, some, some, some more guidance.
Am I understanding the yellow? Section that I think also includes the Burger King. It's that whole strip mall that's right as you're driving up the off ramp. Um, to the Willatchit City Center exit. Is it that whole thing? It looks like you've, yeah, it looks like it's that entire strip. Uh, in which case I, I would offer, if you go back two slides, I think it's two slides.
Oops.
Oh, I was wrong.
That's good.
Okay, here. So let's look at the pictures over there. You see the Fox Island and the Willatchit Point Plastic. And then right under that teeny, tiny little civic sign. But we talk about these being gateways and that prominent parcel. Is right there at a gateway and you're driving up that, that off ramp and you're looking at the back of a building and cars into the Starbucks. You know, drive through line. And you have that teeny tiny little sign. It would be nice if, and then if you look at it, several of these, you know, prominent parcels and whatnot, they're at. What I keep referring to as gateways, however, and I would like to see them reflect that.
Absolutely. And that was, that was more or less my intent in bringing this back was to sort of. Touch on that discussion that we had last time about gateways and how, uh, how important that is to, in, again, identity. Who we are, how we want to be represented, what we want people to have as their first impressions. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, and that is, uh, that is all I have for this. So, um. If we want to, uh, sort of, I'll leave it up to commissioners to talk about your experiences, uh, with the focus groups and, um. I can certainly talk about what, what my impression was, but I, I want to hear from, uh, from the commissioners.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, uh, since. Commissioners not grass and Commissioner Brown were both Ferris month, as well as myself. Maybe we could lead off with a couple of our takeaways, if you will.
Excellent.
And, um, and honestly, maybe some constructive criticisms because we're, we all want to get better every time, right? So if that's okay with Allison and Tom, um. Why don't you lead off Allison with sort of your overview? And, uh, then Tom and I'll follow up. And Larry, you're welcome to comment anytime. I, I, I will listen to Tom.
Okay.
My first impression was that they were not very focused. Um, and I appreciate wanting people to feel free to give their thoughts and all that, but if you don't guide people to do that. They don't really know what to say. And I don't, I did not feel like there was a lot of guidance. I don't want, without there being direction. I think you can guide people to pull things out of people without actually skewing their answers. Um. The. I would say the harbor one was by far and away, it was fascinating to me that it was the most. Widely attended of the ones I went to and eighty percent of the people who walked in that room came in intent on. Stating their opinion and their thoughts. Um, they were not focused on listening to what other people had to say. And it showed as, as they went through the meeting. Um, and that made me sad because I really felt like if you got to the core of what most of those people were saying. And if you got to what they felt worked about the harbor, if you got to what they wanted to see or feel. In the harbor, you would find more agreement than dissension. Um, and I would. That's not the, the attitude with, which they walked in. I would love to see this process. Be encouraged, the idea that the goal is collaboration, but we're all willing to accept compromise. And, and that's what I would like to see in that process. And I don't know that I saw it clearly demonstrated in the focus groups.
Commissioner Brown, what do you, what are your observations you want to share?
They're mainly procedural, I think. I think there needs to be more control so that we don't get. Uh, reminiscences and speeches by people and, uh, historical, uh. Narratives and, and the rest. I, I, I think that focus groups work best when the moderator has a series of questions. And kind of rattles them off because, I mean, you, you want to get input on some focused issues, right? And. The way you get that in my experience is you, you have a, a list of questions and you make sure that everyone in the group. Uh, gets to respond to them if they wish. The, the. And it, the moderator really needs to, uh. Make sure that, that some, some participants don't dominate the, the conversation. There, there was an awful lot of, uh. Wasted time, uh, there, in my opinion. Uh, the other thing is, um, I would limit it to a specific number. I mean, I, I'd have no more than. Say twelve people who are participants in the focus group, but if other people walk in, well, you know, let them sit in the back. I, I kind of regretted that I was sitting at the table for the focus groups because I wasn't really intending to say much. I was there to listen and see. See what people had to say. I should have been sitting in the back, I think. So that's, th- th- those are my procedural suggestions and I, I wrote those up in some notes. I don't think I've said it. Uh, different here than, than what I, I said to you, Rob. So that's, that's kind of my input on it.
Well, um, I, I also wrote down some notes by each individual element area, but since I don't want to go on for all, and Robin has a copy of those already. This specific about what happened and some, some of my opinions and some of what I heard. So it's kind of a mix of both. There were some good, um, ideas thrown on the table for sure. There's some expertise in the community. That's clear. But I, I gotta echo with, uh, Allison, Tom, I mean. We, three people dominated over half of the time and I think a lot of people might have left that. Uh, frustrated that they didn't get a chance to really have a, their comments heard, really heard or, um. Uh, developed at all. So I think we have to moderate more strongly. We have to have a time limit for people that speak. It's, you know. You can get your point across in a minute or two. You don't need fifteen minutes to tell the history of Gig Harbor. Um, interesting as it was. The other thing I mentioned earlier tonight, um, we really have to struggle for much more diversity in our, uh, in our focus groups. Uh, at the time of the day, young people, working people, we had one or two folks that were there, but, uh, it was dominated by. People like me that are retired and have time to go to these meetings. So it's really important that we get, um. This next one, and I'm glad it's during Saturday. It's during the day, I believe. That's a better time, I think. That's a better time, I think, to get a broader swath of opinions on the table. Uh, and I mentioned indigenous, you know, Pu'ap'ry, we need to get them, um, race, color, creed, you know, we got to get abroad, as broad a swath as we can, uh, to make it a credible, uh, focus activity. Um, the other thing I wanted to say it was, uh, how can, how can I put this? It's, it was dominated very much by the harbor. Harbor discussions, harbor concerns, harbor, harbor, harbor. Um, Gig Harbor is more than the harbor. And I think we need to recognize that we're a lot of different neighborhoods. We talked about that. And we, we have to be sure that everybody's, um, concerns are reflected in the plan at the end of the day. So, um, it may be the nature of the day, time of day and the place and all that, but, um, diversity, uh, of, of, um, participants and cross-section of the community is going to be really important to getting a good vision together. Yeah, I'll stop there, Tom.
I just, just to jump on that for a minute, I also think we need, the planning commission needs uh, data on the, uh, population of the different neighborhoods and districts. Uh, I, I think we, uh, we're, we're kind of faked out by the focus on the harbor. And, uh, we really need to represent all the, the citizens of the town and, uh, we need that data.
I'm sorry.
Robin, you and Carl were both there. Um, is, was this a typical focus?
So, no. Um, although I, I learned quite a bit substantively, um, about, and sometimes it was disagreement, but let me just, let me back up and, and explain without casting aspersions on anyone in this community. The initial intent was not to have a focus group. It was one-on-one interviews. And that was, that came from the consultant to be, just to be completely fair. But it was obviously going to be a little difficult to figure out for us who, who would be involved in, in these interviews. So it made sense to maybe expand that and to, um, allow some of our, our, um, you know, bigger kind of, um, uh, I'm, I'm looking for a good adjective that won't get me in trouble. The, the groups like Downtown Waterfront Alliance, the Chamber Rotary, to ask them and the commissions, our commission, the parks commissions, then, and of course your, your commission to either attend or to think of folks who might want to attend. Initially, I've got very little feedback. Folks were thinking about it. I don't know. It took time to, to get the word out. Um, and so I, I, you know, made sure to reach out to a few more folks and say, hey, you know, these things are happening. The idea was six to eight people initially per focus group. And, and again, the, the, the the focus, the purpose of these groups was really for the consultant. This wasn't necessarily for folks to be listening to each other talk. This was for the consultant to sort of build his foundation, his repertoire about what are the issues people are talking about? What do people care about? And really focusing on some of the leaders, not necessarily. And I did invite representatives from the Pu'ap'ry and Squawks and they just couldn't make it, but I did reach out. But it wasn't necessarily, this was not going to be the venue for everybody in the community to say, this is what we want to talk about. It was really more sort of community leaders, however you wanted to define that. And, and other folks. And, and what ended up happening, we got out, as it does in a small town. And we had many, many, many more people who were not necessarily folks that we were reaching out to, but we weren't going to turn anyone away. We weren't going to say, no, you can't be a part of this. That would not have gone over well and, and, and really would have defeated sort of this, you know, a lot of things. So they ended up being much larger than a normal focus group would be. But again, this was really for the consultant to just get a feel for what the issues are, what the, what the conflicts are and what people are talking about. Was it dominated? Yes, absolutely. In, in the groups that I was in, there were some voices, as there often are in most communities. There will be folks that have a lot to say. The events, including Saturday, and all of the other things that we're going to be involved with, including, uh, being at Farmer's Market, being in front of, I don't know, you know, Home Depot, whatever, you know, setting up our little, our little tables and distributing questionnaires and surveys. Surveys will go out to everyone and everyone is invited to participate and give us their input. That's not what this was specifically. It was really for the consultant to get his first kind of take on, on the, you know, the major issues. Um, was it successful? You know, you always get something out of these conversations, even if it doesn't go the way it, that, that we or I would have envisioned. Um, but there, it's still, it's still, there was still value there. At least I, uh, I think so. And, and the, and the consultant has said that he, he has, he, he learned a lot about the discussions, even if it was, you know, two folks sort of, you know, when I was a kid or whatever. But, um, I, some of, I mean, just as an example, I sat in the, um, the, the arts culture and history group and the, uh, the sort of sense of, of, you know, how much the, the city, you know, values in terms of money spent or time uh, discussed, uh, uh, you know, our, our attention to arts and, and culture, um, is not, you know, seemed inadequate to a lot of folks that were sitting there. And, and that was surprising to me. I, I, I know that there are lots of things that we don't have, theaters and things that we've actually talked about in here. Um, but I was surprised at, you know, um, how little support folks in that group, many of them thought uh, that the, the city provided for, for arts and, and, and culture and things. So I mean, that's not like, there, there's no right and wrong. Like, you know, well, you know, that person doesn't know what they're talking about or this person. It, it was, it was the, the, the dynamic of the, the discussion and, and um, and, and different ideas that, that folks had about how to improve that. So um, it wasn't what we would have wanted it to be, but there was value. The events moving forward will look very, very different. We can do focus groups again and do it in a way that makes, maybe is more focused. But, but this was, this was kind of a one-off in other events. And, and, you know, I've had many conversations, folks that either were there or were not there or wanted to be there, um, have called me up and I've, I've spent a lot of time talking to folks about their concerns. I have, I, I have a growing record of input from all sorts of sectors of our community. So, um, I, I will, I, I hear exactly what you're saying. We will be reaching out to everyone we possibly can.
And I would say
I almost did.
Any meeting like that needs to have some time management applied to the, to the participants. It can't be free, totally free-flowing like that. It, at least I, I can't see it actually being very effective unless there's a, you know, like consultant, you know, the planning team, uh, steps in and, um, kind of shares the time available with as many participants as, as, as they can to get the inputs that you need to get a good vision together. But, uh, any other, anything else?
Could I, could I add something to that, to what Robin was saying just briefly? Um, and Robin sugarcoated it a little bit. Uh, and so I just want to say that, you, you know, we had a plan for those focus groups. And as Robin said, they were meant to be about six, maybe eight people max for each one of those groups. Thursday or Friday. Okay, uh, I think it was maybe Thursday, but Friday, especially, uh, the week, the week before, we were having these on Monday and Tuesday. The, the word sort of got out to some folks in the community and there was an outcry. I mean, we were in basically, you know, damage control on Thursday and Friday to figure out what to do. Now we've got people saying, you know, not transparent government, they're having meetings behind closed doors. They're going to approve the comp plan without us. That kind of thing was going on. Okay. So I'm just, I'm just going to, I'm just going to put it bluntly. That's, that's what happened. And so we had a plan up until Thursday or Friday before these meetings took place. So when we came in on Monday and Tuesday, we did not know what to expect. And so I just, I want to put that out there because I don't want, I, I know, I don't want, I don't want our consultant to end up with egg on his face, I guess is what I'm trying to do because he really had a plan to come in with an intimate, small group. Have a discussion with a small group. You can't have a discussion in a room like that. It was just a, he had to just sort of open it up and let people speak their mind because we only had an hour. And now you've got 20 people in a room and everybody wants to talk. What are you going to do? So we kind of had to just let it go the way it went. And I agree with you that, and Robin agrees with you that it did not go as well as we would have liked. I do agree with Robin, however, that we did get information out of it. It wasn't a waste of time. The consultant did go away, come away with a lot of notes. I took a lot of notes. I think he did get a good sense of what some of the issues are in the harbor from those meetings. Did he get to have a little back and forth and ask some clarifying questions and have that sort of interaction with folks? He didn't. And he couldn't because there just was not enough time in an hour to do that with 20 people in a room. Not possible. So we kind of got, our process got a little co-opted and that happens in public processes all the time. And so we have to, we got to roll with those punches sometimes, you know? Um, and it was a lesson learned for us, you know, and, and how to, how to go about that in the future. Uh, and how to sort of pull those things together, uh, without, um, uh, letting, you know, getting people's hackles up, I guess. So we, you know, we learned, uh, we learned a lesson there as well in the process. So, you know, I, I guess if there's nothing else, you know, like you said, we can always do things better. And we do appreciate the, the feedback that you're giving us too, because I, most of what you're saying, we were a lot, a lot, we had this, a lot of the same conversations. Um, and we appreciate that, um, that you observed, uh, you know, similarly and will, will do better in the future for sure, if we ever uh, have the need to do another, something like that. I, I don't expect that we'll do that again in this process though, because it's just too contentious. We thought it was going to be contentious with the one-on-ones. That's why we went away from that. We thought you know, he's not going to like that when we pick these, you know, six people in the community to come have a one-on-one with the consultant. So we opened it up to a little bit broader. And I think maybe that, it might've been our, that might've been our undoing in some ways.
Everybody stormed the gates.
So that's kind of how I just, so I didn't want to sugarcoat it. I appreciate that Robin, um, was, was being more tactful.
That, that background is very helpful. And God bless you. So, uh, or anything else that you had on your, um, I have a couple, one, a couple of, uh, meetings that I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of, um, that you probably want to as well. Um, because I love your flyer. Charting our course, right? That is May 20th, 10 a.m., 2 p.m. Can commissioners come or will we?
Anyone, anyone can come. It's informational. There no focus groups involved. Everyone will be, yeah, there's an exercise, um, involving dots and things and, um, or just picking up information. A lot of great graphics. Michelle has been helping out with tremendously. And then the story map, um, will be shown, uh, in the chambers. Um, I think, I think it will be very impressive, uh, for folks and, and it will be made available, um, on our comp plan update website uh, after Saturday. But, um, it's a great tool, provides a lot of context and, um, and is interactive. So folks can you know, click on something and see this is this park. This is, you know, these are the amenities. There, there's just a ton of information. There's a, a timeline that shows where our growth has occurred, annexation over time for folks that they're not familiar with how we got to where we are. Um, a lot of data, uh, housing, employment, all kinds of fun stuff. So.
Commissioner, so just may I ask a quick question?
Sure.
It's regarding that flyer, um, and the meeting. I saw it quickly. I was multitasking at the time, the online version of the flyer and I I was going to share it to my Facebook and I didn't see an immediate or quick way to do that. I know it's on your, on the website. To be honest, there are a lot of people in the harbor who are looking at the Gig Harbor website on a frequent basis.
It hurts my feelings.
Um, sure, but is that, is it, Michelle, is it easily shareable? Um, you know, we have asked the city clerk to share it on the city Facebook page as well. Okay. Um, I can, I'm going to take this little guy home with me tonight. I can find a shareable PDF or a, um, Jake had sent to you though. Yep. Thank you.
We'll get it out there. You bet.
Near and dear to my heart is the Climate Action Plan. And my last note said the city council work session on May 25th, we discussed that. Is that still?
That was bumped, right? Yeah, uh, that was, uh, that was bumped for a number of reasons. There were a lot of things on that particular, uh, uh, meeting. I don't have in front of me to you. You don't have to pull it up. Yeah, it's June 12th is what I want to say. Wait. Oh, this is a study session. So it'd be a Thursday. 15th, June 15th.
And between now and between now and then, we're planning to reconvene the CCC pack uh, and have a discussion about the, the climate action plan, uh, at that, that meeting. So there'll be another, uh, another meeting prior to the council study session. Um, so we'll have that. Any comments that come out of the CCC pack, then we'll go on to that council. We'll let the council study. We'll let the council know at that study session that we heard these things. Uh, and then from there, we'll take it on to, um, council meetings for adoption by resolution. So so moving quickly, because we're on the downhill, you know, right now, but we're getting ready to release the sort of the final version. We had a meeting today internal with the consultant to talk about the, um, implementation strategies, which will be an appendix to the plan. It was sort of the last piece that they needed. Uh, so they're going to be compiling that into the plan and you know, dots and, dot some i's and cross some t's and we'll have that thing ready and then it'll be, it'll be released. Uh, or I think in a draft version for the public and the CCC pack soon.
I'm glad you're bringing it back to the CCC pack. Some folks there worked a lot on and they probably it's a good thing to do to show it to them first. They may have, who knows, they could find some issues that need to be addressed.
Agreed, Chair.
Um, the section I should be talking about, other business. I'm sorry I jumped into it. Um, does any other commissioner have any other business they'd like to bring up this time? Uh, Commissioner Booker.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I'm sorry I missed those meetings this week, but, um, now not so much. Any rate, um, as I mentioned earlier, I, I got an informal presentation from Darren Fallon, a long time, um, DRB, um, Design Review Board member and, uh, just kind of about the history of the comp plan and design review. Um, which I believe they're going to see, they were going to try to set up and, and, uh, have him give his presentation to the council. I would encourage, um, any of our, uh, commissioners to to watch that if, if that does happen. I, I'm not sure if that'll be a public event or not, but maybe even, um, he could give us a short, um, uh, presentation as well. He did a really good job of just looking at the history of kind of where we were, where we, where we are now and, and where we could be going. Um, and, and related to that, um, there were two documents that I think we mentioned a couple of meetings ago that I'm not sure um, all of you have seen, but one was, uh, 2013 U-Dub storefront studio, uh, study. And, um, I did, I do have those on PDFs, so I could share them, uh, through Robin. If you guys are interested, there was another uh, study done in, uh, 2017, but, um, they, they did a really nice job, some smart college grad, uh, graduate students, I'm assuming, um, of just kind of looking at the community and in our, our built structures and, um, and some ways to, um, infill and improve and, and kind of evolve in a, some real interesting ways. It's not all, all the answers, but it, it does kind of, I think, expand the mind a little. So, um, I think that's all I had.
I'd like to see those, if we can get those distributed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send a link to Robin, I guess, is probably the easier, or Michelle, e- either.
Either or, and we'll, we'll disseminate.
I, I also have a, I also have links to the, both, uh, I think both of those plans, at least, at least the 2017. Um, so if that's easier to just send the links out to the, to the planning commission, I could do that to Commissioner Burkhardt.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, that's, that's all I would have also. So they're, they're available on the U-Dub website, I believe, somewhere, but, um, and to avoid the hassle of And to avoid the hassle of having to search through those. Yeah.
I'll send those out.
But, yeah, I had a couple of. Documents to the Darren prepared on the DRB entries and things like that too, that he said, feel free to share. So. I, I could be, I'd be happy to do that also if you guys want to peruse us.
Sure.
Sharing is good.
Sharing is caring.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the housing. Material we're going to be. Hearing about at the next meeting. As I understand it. This, this go around on the comp plan update. The, the housing. The future housing needs. Projection. Is taking the place of the population growth projection. In terms of our obligation to respond and plan and the rest of it. Do I have that right?
The commissioner, it's not, it's not taking the place. It, it's still based on population growth. There's just, there's a, the Department of Commerce. Has put out a tool. Sorry, that makes a few different assumptions. So we, so Pierce County. Adopted both the population and, and housing unit. Allocation numbers. And then commerce came in and created a tool. Basically just a spreadsheet with, you know, different. Sort of algorithms attached to it, but. Made some different assumptions about household sizes. And the impact of, of second homes and, and even short-term rentals. Anyway, it, it, it's still based on, on population projections. But there's, there's a different formula at play that again takes into some of the other variables. We don't know all of the, the behind the scenes methodology, but, but we have the number. That is allocated to, to Gig Harbor. So it's related to, to population, but it also, it's, it, it is divvied up by income band. So.
The consultant is going to be giving us the kind of a preview of their report on. The housing needs assessment, right?
Correct.
And, but in addition to that, I understand it. We also need to produce a report or an assessment of the available land for additional housing. Is that right?
That's, that is correct. That's how we show ultimately, and that's not all of something that, that this consultant did, but. When we are, are taking our allocation and showing. Through the comp plan, through policies, changes to development regulations, all that, we, we use available lands. To show that we can accommodate. Various different policies. We'll, we'll show that, but this is how we're meeting that number and that we're saying to commerce.
Is the consultant going to address that part of it as well? Or someone, some other, is that coming from someone else?
Address the available lands?
Yeah.
The available lands, that's, that was done by Pierce County already. We already have that. That report Pierce County does, Pierce County is responsible for producing that report. You can find it on, on their website. If you do a. A search for Pierce County Buildable Lands Report. It'll take you right to their webpage. You could look at the last one and, and this current one. And there will be data in there for, for Gig Harbor specifically that talks about what we have available by zone essentially. So we have that data, but what Robin was saying is correct that that's, that's important. But what's also important is, is the availability of. Land by, by zone where we can actually. Get to the numbers that we have to get to. So that might mean that some of those zones have to change. In what they can allow.
So the, the housing needs assessment, the, the last part of it, so it talks about what, what we have now. What the projections are, what our allocation is, and then policy prescriptions for how to meet that. And so it, it factors in available land, but also talks about, as, as Carl said. Density ADUs, but you know. Modifying our, our permit processing, expedited processing incentives, financial incentives. The whole gamut. And then it's up to us, of course, and, and, and the community to figure out which of those things. Is preferred and how we get to meeting our obligation. But the, so yeah, the, the, the needs assessment lays out alternatives. It doesn't tell us, you know, what to do or what works or what fits, but the, the housing element. Will, will delve a little bit more into. Assuring that, that the policies that we end up adopting will, will help us to, to meet that allocation number.
Do you have a sense of when we'll be discussing the housing element? Is it scheduled or?
In this. Forum kind of, right? I, any, any time. I don't have a hard and fast schedule. It, it's beefy. So. I did want to wait until the, the housing needs assessment was completed because it does answer some of the questions that I think are going to come up. And, and the element frankly, more than. More than almost any other, I mean, land use. Maybe transportation, but land use and housing, we really have to look forward. So looking at our existing policies. I mean, it's interesting, but, but it really is, you know. We're, we're, we're moving past, you know, some of these other, you know, design, we can talk about, you know, things and. Changes that we, we think are needed. But housing, it's not a question of, you know, well, maybe we, we have to, right? It's, it's the, the legislation compels us. To do these things. So to answer your question, anytime after. After the, the presentations and, and your commission has had a chance to absorb. The, the needs assessments and then you'll also get a presentation. From Burke talking about middle housing, which is also part of the, the House bill. And then, and then shape our South Sound Housing Affordability folks will talk about affordable housing. So. After that. Housing extravaganza on the first of June, I can come back and talk about housing. If you'd like, right after that, or if you need more time to sort of process. I'm, I'm, I'm flexible. I was, I was. You know, I didn't have a, a super hard and fast trajectory on this, but I did want to wait.
Will there be, is there a written report that will be available sometime soon?
Um, well. The, yes, but soon being it, there. There was yet another change from the Department of Commerce. And so we actually had to switch methodologies. From what we, assumptions that we had made. Previously and the, and the consultant will go into this. I'm happy to. You know, talk your ear off about it, but this is another 11th hour change that made everybody run around and switch. And so our consultant, ever patient, is, is revising some of, of the report to account for that. But we're supposed to get a draft. Either tomorrow or early next week, we'll look at it, kick it back to them and then. Either. Before the, well, I, I, I would assume that we will be able to. Kind of bless it right around the time that we have them come in on the first.
Well, I would certainly like to see the written report when it's available.
Understood.
Well. Any other? Business from any of the commissioners? Then I'll just make one note that our next meeting is June 1st. 2023. Don't miss the housing extravaganza. It's going to be standing room only, I'm sure. If anyone would like to make a motion on adjournment, I would welcome it. Commissioner Bradbury has moved to adjourn and Commissioner Snodgrass has seconded it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You can't miss that meeting. All right. Thank you, everybody. Good night and have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Mark. We want to see you here sometime. Okay, buddy? Oh, God, the pressure was terrible.